Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, January 13, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Quirk, please remain standing after the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please revise that Governor DeValle Patrick has ordered that the United States flag and the Commonwealth flag be lowered to half-staff at all state buildings from sunrise until sunset on Saturday, January 11, 2014, in honor of Specialist Ryan A. Goldie, U.S. Army of Wareham, who died on December 22, 2013. Please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Any of those lately?
Yeah. So, tonight's agenda, tonight's proposed agenda includes the organization, which includes the read mail that we'll turn over to Keith in just a minute. We'll go on to public input and member updates. We have some meetings with town boards, we have some business with town boards. We have a joint meeting at 7:30 with Park and Rec Commission. At 8 o'clock, we're going to meet with the study committee to increase voter participation. And at 8:30, we're going to, we're scheduled to review our regulations and policies, and go over our goals, get an update on the goals. At 9 o'clock, we have some items from the town administrator and the assistant town administrator for finance and budget. And at 8 o'clock, we have other business minutes approval. And at 9:15, we are scheduled for executive session for strategy with respect to litigation. With that, Keith?
Mr. Chairman, a few items in the mail packet. First, we received word from MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that they will be providing Littleton with $10,000 worth of services under the DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance Program, to help us update our housing production plan. Updating that plan has been one of our top goals for the new housing committee. There was a plan in place that Littleton had submitted in 2005 under the old housing committee. That plan had a shelf life of five years and expired in 2010. It needs to be updated. It's a $20,000 scoped update. We had $10,000 in funds set aside a few years ago, and together with this $10,000 grant from MAPC, we'll be able to undertake the scope. And it will be a very involved process in the coming months. We'll prepare some information, do some outreach. We certainly want to involve members of the community, want to involve members of this board, the zoning board, the planning board, housing authority, and other stakeholders. But we're pleased to get that assistance from MAPC. Next is a letter that we received from our state legislators, Senator Eldridge and Representative Arcero, with their letter of support to Secretary of Economic Development Greg Byalicki, in our effort to find funding for the MBTA to be able to undertake a feasibility and parking needs study for the Littleton commuter rail station. That is, that effort to find that money is still in the works. There's going to be some initial work that will be begun by MART, the Monticujuset Regional Transit Authority. At a Pittsburgh Line Working Group meeting last Monday morning, Mo Kahn, who is the now retiring administrator of MART, he retires at the end of this month, in fact, after decades in place there, is, we're making sure that it gets on one of the last agendas for the advisory board, so that there can be some initial work begun by MART staff to get ready for the additional work that will be done by a hired consultant, once we can get the money in place. At the Pittsburgh Line Working Group meeting, it was also reported, or MBTA was confirming, that by the end of next year, we can say next year now, by the end of 2015, that's the projected completion date for the improvements to the Pittsburgh Line, which would facilitate the expansion of Littleton Station's schedule. We've been told that that will happen, that we will get South Acted scheduled, once the Pittsburgh Line improvements are all done. The date that is now being talked of is the end of next year. So, we'll be working towards making sure that there is, you know, some shuttle in place to serve that station by the time that extended service is in place. So, a lot of moving parts, and still there's a lot more to be done. Next, we have a letter that was received from the Office of Attorney Doug Duchesne, offering, a letter from his associate Melissa Robbins, offering information regarding the Neshoba Valley Tube Park, and specifically requesting a meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss. There was a site visit held at that, at that location earlier today, and a timetable that was, that was suggested in conversation. If the, if the owner applicant chose to proceed in this way, would be to get the board, file with the Board of Selectmen a, an application under the extensive recreation bylaw, or amending the prior special permit that had been issued in 1999, and/or a new permit. And it's the stated intention of Attorney Duchesne that he'll be filing that application for both later this week. There's a requirement of 14-day newspaper notice of that application, so that we could schedule a public hearing on that matter for as soon as February 10. It couldn't be any sooner than that. But that seemed like, whenever, but the point is, whenever that public hearing is held, would seem like the time to have the discussion with the, for the applicant to come in and talk to, to the full board. So, that's the, that's the proposed schedule there. There, following that is a, a letter that we received from residents at 54 Orchid Drive, David and Kathleen Voudro, expressing interest in some town-owned property that abuts theirs. And we did circulate it to staff, at least initially, to determine that the size of the property exceeds the, the threshold of the abut a lot program, and, and therefore, if, well, if it didn't, if it, if it did fall within the scope of the abut a program, we could add it to the list of properties to bring to a town meeting to authorize that it be disposed of through that program. If we can't pursue that route, then the only way that we could dispose of the property would be by seal bid or by auction. So, those are the parameters now. We don't have a staff recommendation yet. We only got the, the letter late last week, but we can certainly look at it and bring back a recommendation. We didn't receive any information back of whether any other departments are interested in the property or not. And then, lastly, we have a notice from the, or an invitation, I should say, from the Neshoba Valley Tech School District, inviting town officials to the annual breakfast, where they unveil their budget requests for the coming year. And this year, that's scheduled for Friday, January 31, at 9:00 a.m., and that's at the Tech High School in Westford.
Yeah, I went to that a couple of years ago, and it was, it was a great experience. Learned a lot, and I especially learned that if you call ahead, you can get a vegetarian breakfast. They will, the kitchen will prepare that special for you, because I didn't make that request, and I ended up eating like, half of what they gave me. But, anyway. Okay. Thank you, Keith. I'll open it up to the board now. Alex, do you have, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. I'd like to recognize a couple of people who are actually creepy, but that have, in their own way, contributed to the flavor of this town, and what we have in the town, and the town we want to live in and support. So, the George Lewis Award was bestowed on Littleton Conservation Trust members Rick Finley and Don McGeever. This was a meeting of the Sudbury Valley Trustees for their significant contributions to the preservation, protection of conservation land. Rick and Don shared this year's George Lewis Conservation Award for their considerable, for their considerable community conservation efforts, both within the All Volunteer Littleton Conservation Trust and beyond. I'd also like to recognize sadly the passing Barbara Chapin, a longtime resident and naturalist to this community. She was an avid volunteer, and as many of you know, an employee for this town for a long time, working for the Conservation Commission. She worked diligently for the Conservation Commission, all while giving up countless hours above and beyond by doing sightwalks, taking training classes, anything else that needed to be done. She was even known to take her grandchildren on sightwalks. I was told she had boundless energy and enthusiasm in everything she did, and from what I knew of her, that is absolutely true. She also served as the secretary to the school committee, library trustee, a theater guild member, treasurer of the First Unitarian Church, and the Littleton Community Garden. Barbara was truly a naturalist who helped us maintain a sense of balance between our inevitable growth and our natural heritage. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe? Anything tonight? Jenna?
I just wanted to mention that the Council on Aging will be hosting myself and Mr. Knox at a coffee hour. So, at 10 o'clock on Wednesday, Joe and I will be with the Council on Aging to talk about Board of Selectmen issues, and any other things that the folks in town wish to bring to our attention. So, we're looking forward to doing something special for them on that day.
Joe, you good? All right. I just have two things. Well, one, I should have first mentioned that this is the first regularly scheduled meeting of our 10th centennial. And if you don't know, all the memorabilia is on sale, that this is just one item that we received at our meeting last week, we had a special meeting last week, and all of it is available at My Town Sports. You can purchase and order memorabilia there, and you want to get it before, before the 10th centennial's over. So, get it now. Another thing I just wanted to reveal that, in conjunction with this letter that we received from the Law Office of Doug Duchesne, or whoever else is his partner there, Doug Duchesne requested a meeting with me. I met with him on Thursday morning, and he mentioned that it has been brought to his attention that this permit was in violation, and he just wanted to go over it with me and make sure that I knew that he would be coming forward. And he did follow up with that very quickly on the, on the same day. So, I just wanted to reveal that meeting. And that's all I have. So, I guess I went out of order. We'll jump back to public input. Is there anybody here who has anything to say tonight? Yes, sir. Deputy Chief?
Deputy, that came Deputy Chief. Just to follow, on Mr. Bergman's, what he brought up about the MBTA station, I really need that support, because right now, that station's running at about 105% full already. Never mind when the double tracks are done. It's already, they're already parking in the, we're getting calls from the MBTA to go, go up and give them a hand. They're already parking in the grass or other areas, because there's no spaces left already. So, I guess if you do build it, they will come.
It's an amazing success.
Yes, absolutely.
Is there anything temporary we can look into? I mean, I know Egg Rock is empty now, right? And that was one of the-
I'm not sure if they have a tenant in there or not, but we can certainly look at whether there are spaces within walking distance.
Oh, you probably got to provide, well, we have our ADA spaces, so if we could, just, I guess, if we can investigate that, see if there's any place for overflow parking.
Right now, I mean, actually, for the future, once we get a shuttle in place serving the station, we would have the capacity, at least, to, to link remote parking sites with, via shuttle, to, to the station. We're not at that point now. In the meantime, you know, if, if there are vacant parking spaces elsewhere on, you know, Foster Street that people could walk to, I mean, that, that's, that's potentially something we could-
Yeah, I know there's a lot of liability issues and things like that, but if we get some overflow, rather than have them dump onto Foster Street, that'd be good, so.
We'll look for some solutions.
Thank you. Okay. I have a schedule here. We'll jump right on to open space committee appointments. If no one has any objections, scheduled for 7:20. We have two appointments here. Oh, no, we have a open space, and then we have a library trustee's vacancy. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And on the open space, there actually are two positions we're looking to fill, that the Park and Rec Commission has selected Gary Austin as its representative on that board. So, you want to vote to appoint him there. And then, we also have a citizen-at-large application from Samuel Bell, so.
I'd like to know, was the nomination accepted?
Gary.
And is Mr. Bell here? Oh, okay. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bell? Do you have anything you want to say?
I'm just joined, so we can keep the town up to date on their open space requirements, and hopefully we can be, it'll keep us up to date for available state funding, and I'm interested in open space.
Okay. Gary, you're a longtime resident and volunteer. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, we're good.
Pretty clear of that message.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to the following, to indefinite terms on the Open Space Recreation Plan Implementation Committee. Number one, Park and Recreation Commission Member Gary Austin, as nominated by said commission, and Samuel Bell.
Most have been made in second for these nominations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
On the next item, on the library trustee appointment, there's, there's not any action for us to take tonight. I put this on the agenda, because I thought there might be the trustees met Thursday night, and, and I'm not sure what they voted to do. They haven't communicated that yet. But, they have, frankly, I would share with you, I see a problem in filling this vacancy, because under our normal procedure, we would advertise for a month, and then you accept, you know, accept applications, schedule a joint appointment. By the time we do that, under your policy, it's, it's going to be, there's only going to be a month or two, or two at most, left between then and the time that you fill the vacancy, that the, that the remainder of the vacancy gets filled at the, at the, at the May election. So, I'm not sure if that's the, the issue that the trustees were, had or not. They have 30 days to notify you of the vacancy. The vacancy arose on January 2. If, if they don't tell you before then, which they have not yet, then it will be February 2, before you can officially act on it, by which time, there, there will be almost no time left to fill the vacancy. So, you might, you might want to think about this, this vacancy being one that you not fill, rather than, we did check, you had three applications last summer, and we, and you appointed one of those three, Peter Church. The other two, we contacted, we heard back from one, at least, who said he's no longer interested. I don't think we heard back from the other candidate. So, the other, the other thing I would have brought you, if, if someone that you've already interviewed for it a few months ago said, "Yeah, I'm still available," you might want to just put that person in at the earliest opportunity. We don't, I don't, we checked, we don't actually have candidate ready to go, so.
So, we have a policy, I believe, that, you know, if a selectman resigns, we were talking about this earlier, or if a selectman's out of office within so many months of an election, that we would not fill that off, we would not call a special election. Can we, I know we wouldn't need to call a special election for this, but is it something that we can do kind of consistent with that? We can say, "Look, it's less than six months."
And it's a fairly standard language in a, in a town charter, for example. If, if within some reasonable period of time, that vacancy arises, which would get filled by election, that you can opt not to fill it. You know, you can make do for, you know, I think typically, three months is a minimum time that you, that it'd be worth your while.
Can you run that by Mark and the trustees, and see if they're okay with that?
Sure, we'll check back, and if that's, I mean, if it's agreeable not to fill the vacancy, that, you know, because, say, by the time you, you could actually fill it, we will be accepting nominations-
Yeah, right.
-for the ballot, so.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll report back on that.
Okay, thank you. All right. That's 7:20. Do you know if you're expecting anybody else? Do you want to wait until 7:30, see if anyone else fills out? Well, it's supposed to be. I think there's going to be some other interest or resistance. Let's hold off that. Let's go to, if we could, can we go to the Staffing Vacancy Review, item 7B?
This is a MART, part-time on-call van driver to be filled, and it's at the request of our Director Elder and Human Services. And it was, it is within the budgeted.
This is just to add to the pool of on-call drivers, their pool has been reduced, and their experience, they still need to fill shifts, so people better out due to illnesses. So, they need to get the qualified drivers in beforehand, and it's been-
So, are there any motions?
Remove that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the Director Elder and Human Services request under the Staffing Vacancy Review policy to fill. One, to fill a part-time on-call non-benefited position, MART van driver.
Second?
Motion been made in second here. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we jump to gift funds? 7A? Is this something you can do in five, in eight?
Seven, six.
Yes, you can.
Name that tune.
Yes. We can spend it more for-
We have, we have two gifts, actually, to review this evening. The first one is for the fire station. We received an anonymous donation, unsolicited, of $1,000, to be deposited, proposed to be deposited into a special gift account. The donor specified that the funds be used for whatever costs are associated with the recap and construction of the fire station project. So, again, that's $1,000. The second one is another unsolicited donation that we received from the Fidelity Charitable Fund, in the amount of $930. The only specification was that it be used where it is needed most. So, it's anonymous-
So, we have a list of funds for general fund, pays a lot of the cost.
Well, I suppose you could put it there.
To reduce the tax rate.
I did provide you with a list of gift funds that we had set up to make, in case you wanted to earmark it for one of the existing funds. You could set up a new fund for a different purpose. But just to walk you through the ones that have been accepted in the past, we have the Outreach Coordinator gift, which funds two hours of Tina Maynard's hours review. It sits in deficit right now, because it's a reimbursement, so you know them.
Okay.
So, don't feel wrong by that. We also have a fuel assistance gift, again administered through the Department Elder and Human Services. Chris Side, $2,000, which is in there. We have the agricultural gift account, which is used to promote local agriculture. We have $1,362 in that. We have a Council on Aging van gift account, with a balance of $45,000. That's to be used for expenses with, associated with the repairs and maintenance, or the purchase of a new van. Library Foundation gifts, this is for the construction project for the new library, whenever that appears. There's $177,000 in that account right now. The Tree Congress Committee for activities associated with the Tree Congress celebration, there's $7,600 in there. And Parking Rec, King Street Facility gift, associated with the recap of the King Street facility, about, let's see, $2,386.
So, it can only go into gift funds?
No, it is a gift or donation. It can go anywhere that it's needed.
So, it can go into kind of the general fund earmarked for?
It, it could go into the general fund, but then would need to be appropriated.
You need a town meeting vote to access the money. If you accept it as a gift, then you don't need to go to town meetings, spend it.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts?
I would say, just my suggestion, is go for the oil fund. You know, it's cold, it's winter, it's, we got $1,900 there.
I was going to ask, what, how much pressure is on that account right now? Is it in trouble?
It's, it's always in trouble. It runs out every year, and Tina doesn't want to work for town yet.
Joe? Time to be powerful, give you the chuff oil.
Who didn't get the oil?
He didn't get the oil from Venezuela.
Oh, you didn't know, so you can be chuff oil this year.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well. That's the one that stuck out for me.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, that's great. That's what I was thinking, too. So, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah. Remove that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 53A, as follows. One, to receive an anonymous gift of $1,000 to be deposited, $1,000 to be deposited into a special gift fund account, to be used without further appropriation by the fire chief, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen towards the costs associated with the fire station design, construction project, recently identified as a priority by the Board's vote on January 6, 2014. And, two, to receive an unsolicited gift, $930 from the Fidelity Charitable Fund, to be deposited into a special gift fund account, to be used without further appropriation, without further appropriation by-
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging, thank you. Towards the costs associated with the fuel assistance account.
Second?
Great. Is motion been made second, or accept these gifts? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minus? Grab this. So, this is from the December 16.
I read it, it's a-
Okay.
It's 16, right?
Yes, December 16, 2013.
Remove that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of, the Board of Selectmen meeting of December 16, 2014.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bonnie, is there anything else you're here for, that we can knock off, and you can go home early?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that, it's being almost 7:30. Let's talk to Park and Rec. This is a follow-up to a meeting that we had, what year, December?
December 13.
December 13, where Park and Rec came in, they were summarizing some funds and some requests that they had. And Gary, Brian and I met on Friday, just to kind of get a little preview of this, so I can understand this. But, for right now, I'll just turn it over to Park and Rec, if you want to start presentation of the conversation. All righty. Oh, I understand somebody can't talk? Yeah, yeah. So, it might take a little longer to get some of the answers, so I-
Everybody's very happy about this.
I got, I'm out, right?
Yeah, we passed the hat.
Yes, I did, four days ago. Don't overdo it.
Gary, do it?
It's the worst pain in the universe.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, come on.
So, Gary, you going to take it from here? Yep. Just, do I need a motion to all our groups, since we have a quorum?
Yeah, so move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? All right. We're good. Like we met last month, there were some questions that some of you were looking for answers for. Kate had typed up a spreadsheet of some of those questions about the different classes, or different programs that we're running. And again, what we're looking for is, for the directors, the, the commission believes that the, we are a town, department, and Kate's budget, Kate's salary- still should be earmarked for any future director, should Kate leave or retire at her old age. And we're looking for an additional $15,000 for yearly maintenance fees to parks and playgrounds, for a total of, for this year, $85,000. No. No. So, it'd be, you know, right now, we're at, what, $40,000, $42,000 from last year, this current year we're in? All right, so we're at about a better exact amount, $92,000, sorry. So, we've been getting emails in support of this, but the number's been coming in at 13. Do you have any idea where the 13,000 is coming from, do you know?
If I can help, okay, you don't want to, like, kind of go through some of these. Back in 2010, and this is kind of when everything, when the world for Park and Rec general fund subsidies changed, but back in 2010, the general fund supported the Park and Rec operation in two different ways, by way of salary appropriation in the amount of $80,000 to fund salaries and benefits, and by indirect funds for benefits, pension costs, in the amount of approximately $50,000. And back in 2010, there was a vote taken to start sliding that subsidy down over a five-year period. So, we've been reducing it by about $20,000 a year. And when we got to the $40,000, just over $40,000 level in fiscal 2013, we froze it after a discussion with the board. So, what they do, what they get is a $40,000 salary subsidy, plus about $42,000 in benefits, okay? So, again, about $80,000, somewhat $1,000 today. What they're looking to do, based on the information that I have before me, is get back to that 2010 level, which would get them at about the $130,000 level that they were at, salaries and benefits, okay? So, that's one part of it. Then there's another request to get some funding for facility maintenance in a couple of different manners. There are two, there are a few capital requests that came in during the budget process. One was for $22,000 to do the playground equipment at the lake. There was $5,000 to do the boathouse repairs that are needed at the lake. And $15,000 in general maintenance, based on the facility that they, the facilities, the recreation facilities that they had at that time. Since then, so that's $42,000 in additional capital items. Since then, the Aiden's Playground Facility has come into view, and I believe the $13,000 was identified just by that facility additionally. There was, there was an email chain that went around.
Can I come up? Okay, so, the Aiden's Playground Facility, we are looking to incorporate that into our maintenance plan, but prior to 2010, the maintenance budget for playgrounds and parks was split three ways, from town one-third, rec one-third, school one-third, and then it just went to school and park and rec with an informal agreement. And what happened, this was before my time, but what happened was that it was alternating bills. So, if Jim's people went and did something, they got an invoice, and they brought it to the Director of Rec before me, and then the next time Jim's people got an invoice, they walked it upstairs and gave it to Steve or someone in that office. And what was happening was, is that the rec's bills were getting paid, but the schools' bills were not getting paid. And so, the vendors started shutting the town off. And so, to make good on it, so that we could use our vendors, Park and Rec picked up the difference, which ended up being a little bit, and that was the year I started. So, we started this discussion with the school board, because I was just confused, you know, okay, then if you're being zero, like, are we getting something? And so, what we get from that is the use of the indoor space, not on weekends, because we have to pay for custodians, but when the school's open, we get that. In lieu of that, or whatever they would charge normally for that, we do field, so it's like they're inside and we're outside, and we now have this MOU, I think went through the Board, it's been about a year ago, but it didn't help us necessarily monetarily, because we're charging the leagues, you know, X amount of dollars to maintain properties that they're not using as part of the league. So, the 13, I think it's 15 this year, but what the permission has decided is every year, we're going to need between $10,000 and $15,000, whatever that amount is, depending on what is happening with properties. Aiden's Playground is a bit different, depending on the route that the town wants to go. If the town wants to make the older castle of the trees part handicap accessible, and redo the surfacing, and bring it up to speed with all of the items that I had issued to Keith and Bonnie a couple of months ago, and then again a few weeks back, I mean, that's going to be more than $13,000 initially as a capital plan. I think it's realistically, you're looking at, you know, $25,000 to $30,000 if we can work with some people that I work on the regional boards with, to do some design per diem, and some things like that, and I think, I guess we're looking for direction on what you guys want to do, if you just want to, I don't know, accept the gift, or I don't know whose auspices that would fall under, but, you know, and just not deal with the other part, but at some point, that's going to come up. I'm afraid it's not handicap accessible over there.
So, there's a couple of different issues here. There's the operational budget. So, just to get them back to the fiscal 2010 level, that's a $50,000 increase, okay? So, that's one piece, that's just operations. The capital requests that were submitted this October are $42,000. Part of that is maintenance of existing facilities, part of that is some rehab to the playground and boathouse, but, so there's $50,000 plus $42,000, okay? And now, we've got another-
None of that is Aiden's, because it wasn't-
Right. So, now we have an additional $25,000, $30,000 for the Aiden's Playground issue.
No, that's for Castle of Trees, right, to bring that up to-
Right.
Up to ADA standards. Okay.
Yeah, it's that facility at King Street.
Right.
If it's determined that that needs to be done-
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, I am by no means an expert on the subject. I'm wary to call in an expert on the subject, because once you do that, if they agree, and I mean, the training to become a playground inspector, although it sounds kind of funny, is like really intensive, so if I'm wrong, I'd be surprised, not to be a jerk, but, just because you sit there and they beat you over the head with it, so. If they write it down and say, "Yes, this is my official opinion," then we kind of have to deal with it, or level it, this would be awful.
Is that a government agency that does that? Through the state or through the federal?
It's through the federal government, it's the United States Access Board.
Okay.
But there's an agency that's right, that will come out, I mean, it's free, it's just, it's not free after they're done.
Why don't you construct a notice that you have the problem to be resolved, you have to address it?
That's why I've never made the call.
It's called Playground On-Cell Poppy, that's not 80 games, all right, no matter what.
Well, I mean, there's a couple, one to be, so.
So, so, one more time on the numbers, is $50,000 for salary?
$50,000 is just the annual operating.
Oh, operating, operating, all right, so that's the-
Yeah, that's the 2010.
But that's, that's the total, or that's the addition?
That's the additional.
In addition to the $40,000?
Additional that they're getting out, yes.
Okay.
And then there's the $42,000 that's requested for capital from October.
Okay, that's on the part of the capital request, okay.
And then there's the unknown for the Castle of Trees.
I mean, I can, I can definitely go out, probably not tomorrow, but, you know, in the near future, I can go out and really take some measurements and get you a picture of what I think, I can make some calls to people that, you know, I have a relationship with that I know won't put it in writing and all that other stuff, and get a better number, because right now, it's just, what I, I mean, I don't build the stuff, so I don't know.
Well, it sounds like it's something that should be addressed in the next few years.
The deal is, is that whatever you make, you want it to, well, I would think that you would want it to match what it is now, which is the wood, except they don't make wood, but they make stuff that looks like wood. It's more expensive, of course. So, I mean, that, it would be an issue of finding out what the price is for that, and what the price is going to be next year and the year after. The thing is, is that once you have a plan in place, the agency is actually pretty good about allowing it to be spread out over the course of a couple of years. It just can't be that you, we would say, "Okay, we're going to, you know, do $10,000 worth of work this year, and then maybe we'll put $10,000 in the capital and then not fund it," because they check. The other thing is that, once they get involved, there are grant opportunities, so, I mean, that's what I ended up getting at the beach, was a, it was a grant match for dollar-for-dollar up to $10,000. So, what I'm proposing, we're actually going to get $50,000 more worth of playground equipment there, and then we're going to install it.
It would also be eligible for Community Preservation Act funding as well.
Yes.
Recreational funding.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, that's another potential source of-
All right, well, let's tackle one matter at a time. I think we're, so we've got the operations budget and cap, and then the future unknown. Bonnie, what were you, what are you carrying, and what's your thoughts on this $90,000, the additional $50,000 in operational? As far as, not your opinion on whether we should do it, just where it fits in the budget?
Oh, I mean, I'm still in a deficit at this point, so, it just, it adds to the deficit of $300,000 that I'm carrying right now. So, I mean, that, you know, we're still in a deficit, we haven't solved the budget problem.
Okay. Can I hear from Park and Rec a little, well, actually, I want to get back to, I want to hear what happens if we don't do this, but if any of the board members have anything first?
We got to remember the Chair of the Finance Committee back there, so I don't know if they brought it up to-
Yeah. So, does anybody have anything, any question?
Not yet.
Okay. So, we have this analysis here, I know there were some other questions, and this is, it looks like a lot of work here to answer the questions that we had on December 13th, but, you know, you've been into these numbers now, can you speak to what happens if you don't get this $50,000 increase in operations?
Well, if we don't get it, we'll probably plug along until we run out of money, and then we're either going to have to stop doing some programs that we do for the town, because we just can't afford to do them, and then, of course, the maintenance around the town for the field and stuff, they'll just all deteriorate.
You sound like you're winding up, but-
When we talked last time, were you?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, in reviewing all these numbers, it doesn't look like you have many programs that are actually even breaking even, so can you talk, talk about that in your, in your list here?
What, I'm sorry, what?
You look at youth services, that's not bad on this, $941 in the hole.
No, it isn't.
What page do I have?
I don't know, you're reading.
Are you looking at fiscal year 13 I'm looking at?
Okay, so this is what Gary, I talked about-
This is specific account balances.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. So, we're looking at the general Parks and Rec budgets here, year by year. There's a lot of red items, and then there's the items that are in black.
I would assume red is negative and black is positive.
The total of that fund is $20,000. See?
So, what's the net, the net at the bottom? You have revenues, less salaries, less expenses, then you have a net for that particular year out of the '51, is that what I'm reading?
From fiscal '08 to fiscal '13 for that one, for youth services.
Yeah.
The net carries forward into the next year, and that adds to the revenue and then the expenses.
Oh, I see how they're doing.
So, that's why you see this 20 in that account, this balance, over a five-year period.
So, in essence, for fiscal year 13, they were in the red, but they're still positive balance, okay?
We're not, we're not done over there.
I'm sorry?
It's because-
It continues on.
It continues for us, because we're trying, we're still collecting some of the camp balances and stuff. See, we, it's a very strange system that we-
Well, this is, I guess it's confusing, because this is fiscal year 13, so-
I know, but I'm going to have to go back and like put the stuff in, because there's people that were on payment plans for camps.
Oh, I, okay.
You know, so it will end up, you know, probably breaking even.
Okay.
But there's no program that, like, you're going to see, wow, that's a cash, there's just-
No, 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 I'm just, just wondering what, and I think that's what the intent, when the question was asked, well, how are your programs doing, you know? Are there any that are really costing money that you should determine may not work?
Trevor's Ed is the only one, and we're in constant discussions with that.
Okay.
But we've cut backwards, and we've done as much as we can, and it's, I mean, we were ready to kind of make a decision on that, or move forward to a decision, and now the class in February is filling up, so I don't, I don't know if it's cyclical.
All right, so, as we, the totals are actually account balances, moving into, from fiscal year 13, we have nothing for fiscal year 14 at this point.
Well, I mean, we have it, but I didn't present it, because it's not a real number yet.
Because you don't have the enrollment numbers, is that what?
Well, it's, we register in one season, or in one quarter, and then expand in another, so if you were to look at it now, you would see that the fall is all red, because it's people registering last fiscal year for programs in the next fiscal year. I'm pretty sure that's why, like, the enterprise fund is going to end up being a little bit better, because it'll be way more transparent to see what's good, what's not good.
So, when Gary and Brian and I spoke, there was some programs, as you said, that they weren't working out well, like the driver said, it didn't work out, and instead of dumping it, you're trying to revamp it and to make it work out, trying to adjust some salaries. But there are programs that you've dropped because they're not operating, because they weren't working out.
They weren't supporting themselves. If we start a program and it can't support itself, whether it's a class at adult education, if there's not enough students to support paying the teacher, we cancel the class. It doesn't happen. If we run something and it doesn't work, we don't do it a second time.
Or you would like to revamp it and try it.
Well, the driver's ed was a big one, because we thought that was a good service to the kids in town.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to get that going forward, and we're going to see what happens. Like we said, we cut, we went from a full-time person to a part-time person, without benefits, so we can hopefully come out ahead on that one. And I know that the summer class that just went through was like 20 students, and Kate just said the February class, again, is filling up, and those are the two, and then there's usually one big one in the summer, April, that they fill up, so it's one of those, depends what the, how many students are in town are looking for their license.
Yeah, the size of the class, probably fluctuates with the size of the-
And we get students from other towns, too.
Because there's not a lot of options nearby.
Well, I think there's a ton of options.
Okay.
Well, we wanted to do it for another program for our town, it's a convenience. My kid does it, it's convenient, you don't have to go anywhere.
Okay, okay. Another thing we talked about, there were some programs that you take on that are inherently not going to date mine, because there's no real charging fees, is that true, like the movie at the beach? I mean, these are, these are traditional things that we want to keep on and keep on doing, there's things like the movie at the beach, you help over the triathlon, the Little Kukulua, and these aren't things that you charge in admission or have people sign up. So, are these inherent losers, or not moneymakers that have to be subsidized other places? So, it's, so sometimes maybe, it's not really a program that doesn't work, but it's maybe, you know, an event that's tradition that we want- an event that's tradition that we want to keep moving, and we fund it from other sources within your budget. Sure, yeah.
It's like the Halloween parade.
Right, so I want to announce some of these. I ran them through, the Halloween parade, the costume swap, holiday helpers, fire nights, the father-daughter dance, which I'm a big fan of, the bunny breakfast, touch truck, third Thursdays, movie at the beach started, so there's a lot of, it's a lot of services that you're right.
Yeah, they're not, they don't generate funds. And we have changed, you know, when my kids were little, and the previous director, you know, she didn't have food at the events, and, you know, now we're selling food to try to make a few pennies off of the event, but we're not covering the cost of the event.
Right, but you're doing, you're being proactive and trying to do something offset it, like.
Correct.
Kids running around with the dollar rings, the ring pops.
Ring pops, yeah.
Those are big seller.
Two for a dollar.
Right, yeah, I know. So, can I go back to field maintenance again? Because I'm confused about it. On the same page that he was reading off, down the bottom, it says, you're not responsible for 100% of field maintenance. You don't have people who are up in the fields doing it, that, so do you have to subsidize the DPW for doing that?
Highway, highway does all the labor, and we subsidize fertilizer and all the materials. And maintenance of mowers and stuff, yes.
Right, because we talked the other day, they're getting, they want a new field mower.
Yeah.
So, is it gonna be teamwork here? I was just talking to you with 100%, we have 100%. So, you also ask different leagues to contribute into that.
Each league has a user fee, basically, and that goes towards that field maintenance. And that goes towards the fertilizer, all the costs are incurred from it.
The leagues are part of the work, so it's our, you know.
For those, yeah, the leagues have come from us.
Okay. Now, just to clarify again, when you talk about field maintenance, you're talking about true fields. You're not talking about grass areas in front of schools and things like that.
All grass areas.
All grass areas.
All 63 acres or whatever it is that are maintained in the town.
The common and.
Bay Park.
Every blade of grass that is.
Liberty Square.
All those.
That's what we do, you know, the irrigation and all that other stuff.
That all actually comes from user fees.
But they're not all using that space.
But they could.
But they could. But that should be spread out for the whole town that could use this space, not just the sports leagues.
Of course.
It doesn't seem, you know, that's, it seems counterintuitive sometimes, but then you want two systems to be working for, you know, to maintain grass, you know, it's gonna be like duplication of effort. We maybe have some consolidation or stuff. And maybe that's, you know, so we have to consider that you're doing more than, you know, what we, a lot of people expect.
The highway's doing all the labor. What we're not just talking about is the fertilizer.
Yeah.
Fertilizer and maintenance of equipment.
And grass seed and line and loam and seed and upgrades and fixing any repairs to fences and dugouts and roofs.
Sod.
And sod. And the $7,000 fix to the football field before graduation that we had to beg, borrow, and steal to get money for. And irrigation.
Have you done a, a survey of your user fees compared to other towns?
Yes.
And where, where about, sorry.
You mean for programs or for youth sports?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to speak up.
Programs or youth sports?
Programs or youth sports?
Any of the programs. I mean, you're talking about coming to the limit. And I've heard you say you're coming to the limit, that you can only charge so much for these programs. Where are you compared to, are you, are you high, or are you middle of the pack? Or where are you compared to the rest of the town?
So, I mean, we're about.
Want to back up, Kate?
Yeah. Where, it depends on what the program is. We seem to be more on the higher end. Except for with the towns that, like Concord, that has a center, because we don't have a center. So, what we're facing and what we have faced is, like, this year, we raised beach stickers by $5. And we noticed a huge drop off. It was like a 30% drop off. And it was because people could go to Nara Park for the same fee that we were charging. So, we were just $5 more, and we lost quite a bit, so we have to go back now. And the other thing that we noticed is we, we charged this year for the Halloween parade, just to see if we could cover some of it. Not all. We charged, I think, $3 and $5, $3 before and $5. And we didn't, we usually has at least 500 kids, and that was maybe 250. It was really very low, but kind of, and people were mad because we ask, you know. Oh, we never had to pay for this. All these years, we've never had to pay for it. So, I think, you know, other people do the Halloween parade, and it's $0, you know. And we're at $5. It's not, it's not a lot. We're like, oh, it's only $5, but people are mad. They don't want to have to pay for that. They don't think they should have to, and they're vocal about that. And as far as field fees, we are very unique in Littleton, so it was, it's hard to say, what do you do? What do you do? Because a lot of people, a lot of towns, they just have a line item, and that's what it is. And it's managed between highway and parks. And I think the system that we have between myself and Jim works very nicely. I mean, Jim's a really easy guy to work with, and they do a great, great job. I mean, they're awesome. And if they, I think if you ask him, and he comes and he says, I need X amount of dollars, it's, for the most part, over the last several years, I've been able to find it, but I can't, I can't really find a lot of it anymore. You know, I mean, we had some reserves, and we spent them, and.
So, the other thing that we talked about is that Camp Hallow, and your experiment with Camp Hallow, or, I mean, not experiment, you up, you up the fees and you did saw a drop off. Do you?
We're going back.
You're going back to your old fees now, so that's good, okay. I just wanted, so.
And the other thing we did with that is, we used to give scholarships, and depending on income, we could give people one week or five weeks or whatever. We said, no matter what your income level is, we can only give you two weeks. And that was huge. People were really upset about that because, I mean, the summer was 11 weeks.
Oh, right.
The only gift, but it was so that everybody had a chance.
So, is there something else from the board or Park and Rec? We'll open up the public, and that includes other board members, to other members of other community boards. Anybody else say anything? Brian, Mr. Simone?
Uh, thank you. Chris Simone, Charles Ridge. I just want to thank Parks and Rec. The summer programs in particular are so well-run and valuable, and they're doing great work. Top call. I mean, it's, there's only so many dollars to go around, but my daughter loves these programs, and they've really made a difference. I think a lot of families think that way.
Thank you.
All right. The chair of the finance committee? They put his hand up. I'm not even calling.
Paul, David, Jim are the finance committee. We haven't met, and I'm thinking of a normal position on the Park and Rec issues. We're familiar with them. We were at the last meeting, and we discussed it. But I'll, as the finance director pointed out, there's three separate issues, and I'll address each of them to the extent that we've already discussed them. And I'd say the ADA compliance issues, potential safety issues, that's a, you know, that's a serious issue that ought to be dealt with, you know, on its own merits, and I think we'd be welcome to review whatever plan is put forward to, you know, address that. That seems to be kind of an isolated issue. The capital issues, I'm, I'm not sure why that's not just being considered with all the other capital requests. You folks are gonna have to, you know, derive some opinions and prioritization on. I know you're doing that. I've been following your meetings, so I think that's probably the process that, that those ought to be considered in. And the, the, the topic of the increase in the subsidization from the town of the fee-funded programs, it's, you know, there's no new issues here, really. This is a program that has been kind of held in place for a couple of years. And when I say program, I mean the process of making the funding of the staff and the programs self-sufficient. Predated, you know, my tenure in the finance committee, I think, you know, probably true of most people here, it was halted a couple of years ago when the, the numbers were frozen. It's, there's nothing magic here. If, if there's a desire to increase funding there, it comes at somebody else's expense, and that's, you know, it's a zero-sum proposition. So, I, I think the intent has been to match costs in-house, principally salary costs, to, to their ability to generate revenues in-house. And I'm not gonna quibble with, you know, the wall they seem to be hitting up against in terms of fee structure. I don't think that's the, the whole story, though. I think, you know, there's a lot of other considerations. So, you know, it really comes down to what you identify as a priority. If a increase here is what you want to do, then that's the change in the direction we've been going in. But it comes, inevitably comes from somewhere. So, that's, you know, that's just something to consider.
So, you made a good point that this is a change in the direction that it's been going. And I'm wondering, was that a policy? Because I know what, the change that we're talking about is that there was a plan to have this, the Park and Rec to eventually become self-funded. And was that, is that a policy?
It predates me, so I don't, I don't know if the formal, the policy, I think, consists of a commonly agreed upon goal in the budget process. So, I think others might be able to speak to that more than myself.
And it seems to me that that's been happening and has kind of reached a bottom point for what Park and Rec, or it's gone beyond it, because now you're at your, you know, we have a 2013 level, and you're going, asking to go back to 2010 level. So, it seems to be that policy didn't quite work. I mean, it could work, but what we're hearing is programs get cut, or, or did our fees get raised, and there's lower participation. So, I think we may have reached the bottom of this experiment.
And I, from, the commission thinks, you know, it's about a quality of life in town in Littleton. You know, there's so many things, you know, and I agree with Paul, like, we want more money, but where do you get it from? So, that's why we're here, to see, you know, what does the town want to do? If the town can't afford to fund it, that's fine. We'll live by it and see what happens. But there's just stuff that's gonna end up not going away, and people are gonna be upset. And I just want it up here, so when they come yelling at Kate, it's like, well, we can't get funds that we asked for. You know, it's not, we're not playing games. This is, you know, we're not looking for a million dollars. We're looking for, you know, hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is.
Go ahead, name and address for the record.
Monique Figansky, Gordino State Road. And as a taxpayer, I think it's perfectly reasonable for the town budget to cover maintenance of town properties, all the parks and playgrounds. It just makes sense that they take care of their own property. And Park and Rec, it's great that they're almost self-sustaining, and that, and it also makes sense for them to cover their own programs and services, or programs at least, so that you check to make sure, what do people really want, right? Because you don't want to offer programs that people don't want. So, by trying to make those self-sustaining, you keep that in check. But the services that they provide, I think the town really appreciates. And the town probably should cover salaries for those, at least a couple of individuals in that department if we deem that department to be important to us, which I think everyone does.
All right, thank you. If the board members have nothing else, I think I'd like to ask Bonnie to carry the numbers that are requested in the budget and see where we go from here. You know, hopefully your numbers are conservative again, and, you know, that, that some of the numbers come up when we find the entire deficit.
So, so you're saying, I mean, I, I think Paul's approach was correct in saying, you know, there's a, that we should go through the capital process.
Oh, right, the ca, this is separate from the cap. I'm talking to 92,000, that number that's, they say is needed or requested for their maintenance and their salary of the director.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
And you know what that is, right?
It's $92,000. This is, it is the combined total.
Salary?
The combined total, is it?
No, Kate's salary.
It's the salary of Kate, of the director.
You know what that is?
No, I don't think we need to.
All right.
I mean, it's in the town report, there's no reason to point it out now. But between that and, I mean, this facility maintenance was, the two items came up to 92,000. That's clear what you're asking. When it gets to them, I think, you know, what I hear from FinPom a lot is they're asking for direction from us. And I think if we want to state whether or not this is a priority for us, they can work with our priority and make recommendations. Hey, we understand your priority is, you know, Park and Rec at 92. I'll, you know, look at the books, you know, we have to, we have to cut out this much, so, you know, we suggest maybe we cut out, you know, so much out of that.
And if anything, we'll work with you, but I think the priority, appropriate process is, you folks identify priorities, we'll work with you on how to fund it, and we'll make recommendations accordingly.
Yeah, so, so if it's a deficit across the board, we'll get recommendation on where to make that up. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, I'd like to work in collaboration with them, because we should really focus on the big picture. And like Paul said, once we figure out what the big picture is, they can help us figure out how to achieve it.
Right, okay.
Just one other question. I would like to know how you want us to move forward with 300 King Street. Should we look for that person to see what it's gonna take to come up to compliance?
In my opinion, I don't know if the board can state whether or not they agree, that looks like it's something that's coming down at the line that's gonna be a problem eventually, so I think we should do what we can to look at it, you know, if there's regulations.
We own the property at this point in the Dallas Castle on the Trees. I know there's a board.
Well, we, well, we own, we, we, we own the, we own the property.
Right, but I mean, the structures.
There's an outstanding issue, which I think we ought to also talk about before we depart, and that is that, that there's an offer on the table from the Castle on the Trees to donate the playground equipment to the, to the town. That needs, that needs to get accepted by the, the elected board that's in charge of recreation in, in town, the Park and Rec. If, under our policy, the selectmen need to approve gifts that are offered, that are accepted by other, other town entities. So, but, but, so, so if it, if the equipment is offered, I think it would be important for there to be some action on, on, on the acceptance of, of the gift. If the, I mean, worst-case scenario, if they, if the town says, no, we're not gonna accept it, and, and the parties who own it walk away, we still, I mean, you know, it's still sitting on our, on our property. And we do insure it. Beyond that, though, that we have the, and I know we're talking, we're concerned about funding sources and all that. Well, we have a, we do have a unique funding source, the Community Preservation Act, which, which we can tap for, you know, certain limited uses, including recreation. So, it would seem that if there's a cost that Kate's estimating at, what, 28,000 or, you know, whatever, whatever it may be, it's a, I think it's important for us to button down what that number is, and then submit a request. There's plenty of time to submit a request to the Community Preservation Committee to do it, because either now or later, that there's going to be that expense to be incurred. I don't think it needs to upset the, the, you know, the finely balanced operating budget discussions we're having, that, that it would seem like there's another opportunity to, to find a source of funding for that.
I, I'm not opposed to it, but again, you know, we, we have an organization, a nonprofit organization that's in place right now. You know, do you dissolve that organization? What is the direction the town's gonna give to the Castle on the, what do you, what's it called?
Littleton Children's Fund.
Littleton Children's Fund. So, how does that move forward? I would, I would hate to have those folks that are saying, yeah, why don't we have Castle on the Trees become town, a town entity, then what happens to, to, to that organization?
Well, if we dissolve, we would, we've discussed that we would, whatever funds we have, and I think we have about $2,000 right now, we would donate that to the town.
Okay.
And then, I mean, it just, I, I'm president of the Castle of.
Sorry, I want you to go into some.
Sarah Donovan, Manchester Drive. I'm now the president of Littleton Children's Fund. And we do think it makes sense. The town owns the property, the town insures the property. Park and Rec is going to be, you know, renovating the entire piece of property around the playground. It just makes sense that the town take over ownership of the playground.
I don't think the Castle, the Littleton Children's Fund ever was under the impression, sorry, past president, ever under the impression that we owned that, those structures. Do you know what I mean? Like, the town has always owned the playground.
So, our hope is that the town.
Never had responsibility for it, because there were volunteers who were willing to do the work.
Our hope is that the town will take over the playground, and then we would donate what funds we have to the town, and then dissolve the front, the nonprofit, because there's no more need for it. The nonprofit was founded to maintain the playground.
To build a structure.
To build a structure and then maintain it. You know, buying linseed oil every year to spray it. We used a new product this year, so it doesn't have to be done every year. It can be done every two to three years. We paid for the porta potty that was there every, you know, spring till the fall. So, but once the town, if and when the town does take over the property, then we would dissolve the nonprofit.
Yeah, just, just to make, I just want to make sure you guys are involved. I mean, that's, that was important.
Well, that's our hope, yeah.
That's the problem why this has come up, is because Park and Rec doesn't feel they can support going forward once that $2,000 runs out for maintenance for that playground in the current state.
Right, but if the board approves your 13 or 15,000 dollar maintenance.
Correct, correct.
Then that could help cover the maintenance of all the playgrounds.
Yep. Yep. Because it's a, you know, the, the bark mulch or the, the footing has to be updated every couple, three years, that now they're saying that's spraying every two or three years. We just, at this current state, don't have the funds to do it.
And there may be an opportunity for Littleton Children's Fund to come back in some other manner, to still have fundraisers and help out or something like that. I think it's been a great program that's been working for a while, and it seems like there's a few straws breaking a different couple of camel's backs here. So there may be some collaboration there.
Plus, it's a structure that's twenty years old, a wood structure, so, you know, it is going to need more maintenance.
So if it, you know, eventually, it does need to be made ADA compliant, it might be that the entire wood structure has to be taken down, and something like Aiden's Playground, which is metal and plastic, be put in, and then there's far less maintenance, you don't have to spray a metal structure every year. So that's something to think about.
Yeah. A lot of moving parts, yes, you have one more time, one more.
Chris Bagansky, forty New Estate Road also. And I think it's important to recognize, I mean, we, we feel that these playgrounds offer a significant value to the town, and it's a great place to go, it's a great place to meet people, and I think it's important, if we want to continue to grow the town, to have these types of, of places, Aiden's Playground is just absolutely beautiful, and it will attract the type of people I think we want to, to this town, and the other playground also is, is great.
So I have one more question. So, the three hundred King Street project that's moving forward, would it be now time to incorporate Castle and the Trees into that project, so that that can now be a total recreation area where that was kept out prior?
Right now, the project is going on with CPC funding, and there's no money set aside for Castle and the Trees, but I understand your question, we want to try and incorporate the playground area as much as we can, but there's no extra money for that right now.
So I would ask, why don't we get an application in to amend?
You want to go get some more?
Yeah, just, I mean, you're doing, you're doing a fantastic project at three hundred King Street. We're hearing now that, you know, Castle and the Trees organization wants to get out of.
Well, it just makes sense, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not, I, I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it. So, I mean, we have a big project happening at three hundred King Street, we should amend that project to include any issues that we may have, whether it be ADA, old structure that needs to be fixed, as you said, make it like Aiden's Playground, do it now. Why, why, why not go to the CPC and put that application in?
I think the bigger question is to ask then, if that's the word you want to go, do you just want to keep it, I mean, and this isn't probably the form, but do you want to make the existing one ADA, or do you want to have an entirely new one?
That's your, your.
Yeah, that's your.
So, I'll get back to you, but, I mean, I.
Well, whatever's, you know.
It's kind of separate.
Whatever you all think best to, to address that issue.
I think it's going to have its costs, because I mean, it's a twenty-year-old park. I don't know if ADA was even around at that, at that point, so I think it's going to be, you know, you have to look at the cost to, to revamp it, and then what's your life expectancy, and then look at, you know, what's a new one.
I would think that if you were going to make it ADA accessible, you would get maybe ten years, so my opinion has always been, it's like throwing good money after bad, and you just level it and start again, but for something of that space, I mean, you're talking two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars.
The other thing too.
You have to use that whole space, though.
Three hundred King Street could be phased.
When we get, when we get the engineering back, I mean, I think we can take a better look at it, too, and actually talk to engineering before they're finished with their whole thing, and maybe we can phase it in.
Because if we don't, and one thing you have to do is you have to at least make sure that the plan allows the trucks to get in there and do the work, you don't want to put this new thing, and then we can't even get there, imagine that.
So, so I guess what, and I don't know what the board's feelings are, but I would say, why don't we get an application in to include it, so that when you do three hundred King, let's get into CPC, so they can at least review, and we have a decision from them to say yes or no. Well, you know, like, why?
Okay, but let's get the Morgan property engineered first through CPC.
You can put both requests.
Put both requests in, I mean.
That's in next, next week.
I mean, they can't, they, they can't say no until we ask. And the money can't be spent until you ask, so I would say, you know, let's, let's try it and see where it is at CPC level, especially when you have that fantastic project going now, it's, the, the time is now to include it, my opinion.
Before you on that, Jim.
Sure. Before you go, when are we coming, when are you coming back to talk about the cap plan? Captain Little Quest?
When do we want? Next meeting?
You want to commit, just, we're trying to go through all the, the general departments we're, I mean, wait, they're on board, they're going to raise their bids, right? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so did you get your, you know, we're looking for the recommendations on the ordering, the prioritizing cap plan? Did they, did they get it in yet?
Yeah, their capital plan is in priority.
I mean, we only had one, it was.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So that's our priority.
Okay. Make it easy, all right. Sorry about that, I was thinking we were having them in for a round.
That's why I was.
For cap, yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we done with the?
Preservation committee. Are we done with Castle and the Trees, too? So we know the cap, too?
Yep.
We go on a roll.
Probably not on a roll.
All right. The study to, the increased voter participation, we're looking for an update from the study committee, is the committee here?
Yes.
You are the committee?
I am the chair. I'll stop.
All right, are there any, is there anybody else? How many people are on this committee?
I will go through that.
Okay.
It's here, Bill.
I'm here.
Oh.
I'm here.
Hi, Linda.
There's ten, okay. So.
I'm going to put it up on the screen here in a moment.
Let me get out of the way. Unless you want to reflect it off, oh, you reflected it off my head?
No, look right there.
Oh, all right, well, I got, thank you, I got some water.
Is this another one of those committees you're on? Like, six, or? Anybody else here on those here? Well. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim, I didn't need to have you wait.
If you want to advance it, too, just. Well, thank you for taking, putting us on the schedule for tonight. I'm Alex McCurdy, I'm the chair of this committee, and I will be discussing a couple of things here, and then be turning it over to the vice chair. So we want to talk a little bit about our makeup here and our membership. We, we have Henry Crystal, Linda Lord, Bill Cole, myself as chair, Diane Croory is serving two roles, vice chair and secretary, Alex Pratt, Tim Goddard, Andrew Smarco, Mark Levine, and Brian Carbox. We are, I like to say often that there's always a chair open for somebody to come and join us, and the discussion that's critical to everything we do is, is that we need to take a, the pulse of the town on, on what we're trying to do. So just to review where we are, one of the first things we did is we established a mission statement, and it is the mission of the committee to develop recommendations based on community input, research, information for the voter selection to improve voter participation in the town of Littleton. All right, so that's, in everything we discuss, that's what we're discussing. Will whatever we're doing serve to improve voter participation in the town? So with that, citizen involvement is key. And we encourage it, we want it, we reach out for it, and it's fundamental to our work. We hope that people will come to our meeting, we hope that it will establish an open dialogue at our meeting, we will, as Diane will talk more about later, reach out to the community and try to get their comments, and we try to pay attention to as many aspects of, in many directions that those comments can come in. So we're going to turn it over to Diane at this point, we're going to talk about some of the things she was doing, and what I want to say upfront is that we're working on this PowerPoint presentation, and she's doing her civic duty today, and we didn't get a chance to get coordinated with each other, but we'll be fine with that. No, was it guilty or not?
Go back to mom.
Not you, let's explain to someone, we're going to think this is.
I'm on the jury.
She's on jury duty.
So Keith asked us last week if we could make dawn tonight, and really bring you up to date as to what we've done, where we're going, what, where, where we see this committee heading, and, you know, basically, what we're here tonight is to let you know all of those things. First and foremost, what has the committee accomplished? So the traditional postcard has been replaced by the new town meeting report. As you all know, in years past, we always just got a little postcard every year for each and every one of our meetings, and it really didn't explain anything. So this new town report gives a town-wide observation of every warrant article that's on the, on the warrant. It explains everything to them, and it's, and it's simple and understandable. The town meeting report has the warrant article, the motion in plain language, and whether it's being supported by voter selection in the FinCom. We were lucky enough just last year to have a warrant night, which was done with the town moderator and the town administrator on local cable.
I hear that great meals and ratings, too.
For some reason, that's out of order, but.
That's my fault.
Okay, so.
You want the next one?
Yeah. So plain language is still a work in progress right now. There are still some items that we're having issues with as far as the zoning, it's really tough to explain in plain language when we have a zoning bylaw change. How do you make it any clearer than what it says without everybody not really being able to understand it? So we're still working on that, and the town administrator is.
Yeah, one, one of the things that we test drove at the last warrant was the idea of adding whereas clauses, which we could still probably do a little better job at, making it easier, but the difference, the distinction is that if, if you load up the beginning of the article itself with, with, with non-binding legal language which explains the intent, and then it's followed by the specific legal language that amends the bylaw, that the two, then, then we're hopefully telling the voters what they're about to vote, and then we're telling the attorney general we're asking her to approve in our, in our documents. So it's almost like we have two separate audiences, and, and maybe we could try that some, some more. It is, it has not been a practice in, in Littleton to use whereas clauses, like whereas we want to do this, whereas we, we want to do that, therefore, we're voting this. But it's a, it's a not uncommon practice in some other communities.
We've also been currently working with the town administrator and the prioritization of the articles, which is through financial, articles requiring a simple majority, and then all other routine authorizations. I think in our special town meeting in November, it worked really well, people were very open to it, and I think that everybody was okay with the way that, you know, the warrant articles were changed.
Yeah, and, and the thought was that while the vote from the, that the committee brought was to, was specifically for the November town meeting, that, that nevertheless, the recommendation of having the, the budget articles first, followed by supermajority, and then all other, might just be the policy of what we want to look at as we're preparing warrants.
Expanded coverage of meetings and access, and we've received the support of local, Littleton Cable TV, so that there are more meetings that are being televised, though they not, are not all live, many of them are taped, but we are, you know, he is working, Littleton Cable is working to get three oh seven fully done. I know that there are some meetings that will be taped up there, taped delay, it does have that ability. Next, if you go back one, actually. Establishing stronger electronic and social networking communication. And this is one thing that the residents keep saying, you know, how can we find out more things, where do we need to go, you know, help us to, to know what's going on. So cable is being made more to let residents know upcoming meetings. The town website has been updated, improved, and easier for people to find out what's going on, when our town meetings are, when the events are in town, when our public meetings are. You see the agendas on there, and so more people are, are actually attending meetings because they actually see that out there. The senior newsletter is now being used more, in the sense that the COA van is being implemented, though nobody's taken the actual action.
Which is unfortunate.
But it's out there, so that if they wanted a ride to town meeting, they would just call COA and the van would bring them down there. Unfortunately, like I said, they're not using it as yet, but it's a work in progress. And most of the things that we're talking about this evening are still works in progress, but, you know, it's, it's only as good as the people that actually use it.
And just, I may interrupt something here, you know, particularly in the, what, what we identified as an issue, and this is just an example, of how we can get the seniors to participate in town meeting more, we invited in people to talk to us about that, and they really sort of reshaped our thinking on it. It was, it was, it was, it was amazing to, to, to listen to what they were saying that was coming straight from the seniors and what, and what they were doing. So we thought we were on to the answer, and it wasn't the answer. And so, you know, back to the drawing board again.
And town electronic notification network, right now Nancy and I are working with that. And she has a list of over four hundred emails, so when something's coming up, whether it's a town meeting, special town meeting, the, there are many people in town that have asked for notifications, and they get that notification, so that seems to be working. Though there are so many more that could be getting the notifications that aren't, and it's just a matter of training people as to, you know, requesting the information. And next one. Actually, yeah. And addressing physical detriments. Develop an assistive transportation, which we spoke about just a minute ago. We're, we are currently working with COA to assist the seniors with the ability to come out through the use of the COA van. Now, Pam came to one of our meetings, and, you know, she said that people were coming to her and telling her, yes, we need to get there, we don't want to drive, it's too late at night, we don't want to stay out too late, so the COA van, once again, was being thrown out there for usage, and, and they aren't taking advantage of it. So we're going to attend one of their meetings with the board to see what they can give us back for feedback. And improve senior parking. Now we have more temporary handicap parking spots, which we put up closer to the building, and more senior parking for them closer to the building. And we're reaching out to families. We've put in place the ability to have babysitting for our families at town meetings, though it has not gone on as yet, we are hoping that more families will take advantage of it. Last November, Park and Rec sent out a flyer, and it went to all the elementary schools, the students to their parents, and nobody signed up. Nobody signed up. We asked for a simple phone call to say that, yes, we'd like to use it, it was a simple, you know, phone call, your name could put down there, we could have it all set up, but nobody took advantage of it. Two weeks later, I had somebody come to me and say, well, I got there and there was no babysitting. Well, we put out the flyer, this is what we asked you to do, you know.
Were they, were they kids in school?
You have to kind of take on.
Were they kids in school in Littleton, or, you asked that, or?
What's that?
Were they, were they in school in Littleton, were their kids in school?
I did not ask that, I don't know that for a fact, but it was kind of interesting. Refined, review, and recommend is what we're, we're continuing to do. One of the biggest things we have right now is the upcoming meeting, which we've invited you to, that you're hopefully all still attending on the twenty-second. It's with the town of Wayland. The town clerk is hopefully coming, as well as gentlemen on what's called Elvis Program, and that's electronic voting. And he will be coming that night, David Bernstein, and giving us an idea of what's going on in Wayland, why they've gone to electronic voting. And after that, it's, it's about a forty-minute, we've given him a forty-minute slot, it may not be that long. After that, Option Technologies, which is the group that they use to do their electronic voting, and they're out of Florida, they'll be doing a webinar, webinar that night, and kind of giving us a little bit idea of how their voting is working. And I thank you, and if you have any questions.
Florida, you said?
Florida.
They had such a success with the.
And with such success with the-
Elvis is coming with town.
Is he coming in costume?
Elvis is-
What time is that?
What's that?
Is Elvis coming in costume?
Elvis has left the building. Is that 6:30?
Six thirty is-
The 22nd?
Yes.
Wednesday, the 22nd.
Three oh seven.
We'll start the presentation at 6:35, and we'll have question and answer period at the end of the presentation by the Wayland folks. Then after the technical presentation, we'll have a question and answer period, and then a general open discussion about anything that we want to discuss, more particularly related to the information we saw. And one of the things I got to say is, there's some incredible energy on this committee, and going out and finding, the members are going out and finding these things, and I think the whole committee is pretty excited about this ability to vote for electronic voting and what we've heard preliminarily. This is a great committee to work with, and, you know, I'm very proud to have been chosen as their chair, but they're a great group.
Okay. Any other committee members have anything to add? You would have jumped in, right? All right, I have a few things, but I can, Alex, I assume you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Joe, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Geez, I'm gonna be the bad guy here. You know, I think there are some great things that came out of this. I mean, you can look at down the table at the Selectment, and we're all using the pamphlet now that was handed out. You know, we have the big binder that's good for referencing details, but I think we all use that. And, you know, the fact that we were able to get that mailed at an affordable rate and replace the cards and do, get, you know, kill two birds with one stone, that stuff's, that's fantastic. I think that, I guess what I'm looking for, and maybe this comes from my public sector, is that, you know, now that we have things that we're implementing, I'd like to see some sort of measure of success of those things. I know there was a report that, it was a draft report that was submitted or presented in the same form in December, two years ago, February 2012, I think it was. And I'm just looking, are we going to get a final report on that? And you don't have to answer these tonight, these things are questions you can bring back to the committee. But I think there should be some sort of, I don't think it has to be final, it can be an interim report, whatever you want to call it, but I think there has to be some sort of measure, you know, are these things working? You know, how many people, you know, we tried, we did this, and it increased, you know, town meeting had this many people. We did babysitting. First time we had it was this, this, and this. And kind of look at the trends, is there something else that's causing things? You know, if there was babysitting for an annual town meeting, you know, it was well-attended, maybe the special town meeting it wasn't because people didn't know about the special town meeting, you know, was it not as important? Was there a big game that night? Something like that. But I think I'd really like to see a measure of a lot of the things that are implemented going forward, because I think it just kind of brings everything and closes.
Can I just, one-
Sure.
One of the things that we've discussed the last couple of meetings is, you know, when is the closure time? When does, you know, some of the committee's members say, well, I don't know that I was planning on being on here all these number of years. One of the things that we've been discussing is, we don't see a closure. We see this as, as, there's a lot of work to do and a lot of refinement to do as we go along. So I think your point's a good point. We have to, we have to, we have to continue to say, this is where we're headed, and this is how we measure what we did, so.
I think also, as far, as a part of that report, I would like to have a definition of voter participation, because this seems to be going in a little bit different directions. You know, is it people showing up at town meeting? Is it people showing up at the polls? And is it, you know, people actually speaking out? Because I know that a lot of this voter, the electronic voting at town meetings is there to address one problem, you know, so is that, you know, is that-
I think voter participation is not, not just at town meetings.
Right, well, that's why I think it needs to be defined. I think it's a great mission statement.
I think it, the reason that, you know, so many more people are going, well, I shouldn't say so many more, but there, I think I'm seeing more attendance to other meetings other than just the Board of Selectment meeting, because people are going online, they're finding out what's happening, because that information is now available and more readily available. And I think that people are more in tune to going to a meeting to really find out what's going on because their neighbor found out about it through doing something for it. And it's not always just something that affects them personally, but it affects the town as a whole. And in some way, way, shape, or form, it probably will affect them in the end. So I think that's why you're seeing more people going to more of the board meetings versus our town meetings and our town elections. And I think that's the problem is, was it our intent to increase voter participation at our town meetings and our town elections? Absolutely. Has it done that? We really need to look at that like you've asked, to see if that's happened. But I think the other thing is that going to town meetings, town board meetings is just as important, because what happens at town board meetings somewhere down the line may have an effect at what happens at our town meeting.
Right, yeah.
And if they're becoming more informed because they're going to a planning board meeting or a zoning board meeting, they're gonna have more of a tendency to go to our town meeting because they understand it a little better, versus going to town meeting and looking at it and saying, I have no clue what we're doing here.
And that may be part of the impact. I mean, if you, once you define voter participation, that'll also help you address your impact. I don't know if everybody has sign-in sheets anymore, if you can pull sign-in sheets before the, you know, and kind of get some gauge. I mean, that's a, that's a lot of work. I don't know if we have staff or somebody, you know, to do it, but I mean, anyway, any feedback that you can get, engage it. And, you know, if you, if you state that that's part, you know, revamp the mission statement, or just then define voter participation to be part of that and address that, that's, it's a good point. I don't know if I've seen anything more here, I don't think I have any.
Well, I think, I think one of our issues is, where do you see us going?
Well, I think, until you run out of ideas on how to get people to meet your mission statement, you know, I think, you know, I think when we have, you know, five town meetings in a row attended by 85% of the voters, I think we're done, you know? And we have, we have-
When we have, was that indefinite?
Yeah.
Indefinite on these appointments?
You know, we got 3,000, 3,000 voters turning on, I think you guys will be done, you know?
I mean, that was one of, really, realistically, that was one of the first things that we talked about when our board was initially brought together. What is, is there a number that we need to put on it? Is that the people are being more informed? I mean, we couldn't come up with that answer, because somebody said, well, even if we increased by one person, that's one more person that was there. So what's important? Is it that one more person? Absolutely. But that's not what we want. We want to continue to get more and more people involved, and not just at town meeting, like I said, at the board meetings. That's the only way you could become informed.
I think, I think one comment that you made earlier, Diane, too, about folks in town being active by getting into different meetings or planning board, one, one, one common theme I hear is how LCTV is now, you know, showing these meetings so folks can literally go online and take a look and replay a meeting to see what happened, so if they couldn't make it out. So I think that interactive multimedia portion of it is very important, too, so.
And I think, and that's not measurable, really.
Yeah, and it isn't measurable.
I mean, unless you can find out how many clicks they got on it, on a digital media, you know, but then you don't know what they're watching, they just fast-forward to the bad parts, or they, you know, stick around for the whole bit, you know?
It's never bad parts.
There's people who disagree with you.
I just want to make one comment. The biggest hurdle, in my opinion, is getting people to show up to meetings that may involve something that doesn't directly involve the, I mean, this, you know, been going on forever. The only time people show up to a meeting is if it's in my own backyard. And I would love to see this committee come up with an answer to that, but I don't think we're going to. I, I would like to, well, I'll bring it up at our next meeting. But it's, it's not an easy thing to do, and I'll be honest with you, off of babysitting to accommodate three or four voters? Not so much.
Right.
I was looking, when I got on the committee, for something that would, you know, draw in 50, 60, to 100 more people to town meeting. The trouble, the, not the trouble, but the cost and the planning to provide babysitting for two or three voters, I mean, everybody can say, well, every vote counts, that's true, but you know what I'm getting at.
It's two or three voters until their issue is up, which is one of my, you know, my pet peeve about town meeting, you know, people always run out of there as soon as their issue's up.
Exactly.
Well, I think, I think as a, as a committee, and I think as our board, we need to stress that it's all our backyard. All of Littleton is our backyard. It's not just about these individual issues that people feel like directly affect themselves or their families, that it's, it's all our backyard, and the decisions that we make as a community affect all of us as a whole, and not in isolation to one another.
It's, Bill, you said a minute ago, will you ever be able to solve that problem of bringing people up? That's an ongoing question. I give all the credit to you for the whole committee for trying to do what you do, but there always seems to be that mentality, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but people work, they have kids in programs or things like this, and they get home, and you talk to them the day before, and they'll say, yeah, I'm going to that meeting because I'm concerned about that, but then they don't get there. I don't, I really don't know how you do solve that problem, because some people, number one, you have people who are not concerned as long as, I don't, I'm not affected by anything, let the town run themselves, and you're not going to change. Some people, some, some of our friends don't vote. Some of our friends don't know I do this every other Monday night.
But unfortunately, like Jenna said, every, it's the entire town.
Yeah.
Everything that we do affects the entire town. It affects our finances, it affects our kids, our grandparents, our parents, you know? So every decision we make does affect everybody, and everybody should be looking at it in the same sense. And maybe, maybe we'll never ever be able to solve it, but just to try and get some people thinking in that sense that, you know, open up your mind, come to a meeting, find out what it's all about, and then don't complain unless you go, you know? And then that's the biggest thing, is people come in and, you know, as you all know, I'm, you know, the town clerk, but the collector is in that office, and after a town meeting, or after those taxes go up, the first thing they do is they come in there and complain. And, you know, you try to say to them, well, did you go to town meeting? Did you go to any of these meetings to understand the process? And they all say, no. And so, you know, you don't want to say, well, I'm sorry, but, but you do.
Well, and I think part of it, too, is that the response to that is, well, you didn't show up so you can't complain. Maybe we should be promoting the idea. If you do show up, you get to contribute your ideas, and then you're part of the, of the process and the solution. You know, those who show up get, get to be heard, and they get a voice. So encourage people to show up.
And they get to complain.
And, and they can complain right there on town meeting floor, correct.
And then they can still come into the office and complain.
Right.
I think that's, that's an important part of what we want to do, is we have to, we want to engage the voters very simply. We want them to engage. Wherever they engage, however they engage, as long as they engage, that's a positive thing. And the most basic step towards that end is giving, putting stuff in front of them so that they can engage, so they take an interest, so they know it's there. And, and once they start reading or watching on TV or something like that, they begin to engage. And, and then they want to engage somebody else who will engage somebody else. So I think the, the information parts that we've spent so much time on is really important because it allows, it gives us the best shot to engage people that are, like Joe said, they have busy lives, they got all this stuff going on, and if they can look at a one article and say, what's this mean? And in two sentences, understand what it means, we have the best chance of engaging them at that point.
Well, you read it at home, you see you understand what it is, and say, well, I'm okay with that, and then you stay home.
Well, oh, well done. These people know what they're doing.
Yeah, no, I know. So I don't know, just a couple ideas, I've seen, you know, are you guys on social media? I mean, I, I was talking for a second, so I don't know how much you use in social media, you know, trying to use things like the residents' Facebook website, you know, there's a lot of people, you know, not a lot of new people on there, and I don't know, looking for an answer, and then I was wondering, have you looked into seeing if this can be like a holiday, almost, and like, there's no other town events scheduled on that day? I don't know if that's an option, so, just sitting here thinking.
I don't understand what that means.
Like, I don't know, like, talk to the sports leagues, make sure there's no games that night, or things like that, school, you know?
I mean, we don't meet on nights that the paper-
They choose the playing.
Yeah, you know?
Exactly, I get it.
You know?
So being the policy, as Jenna said.
That's right, policy, yeah. We don't fill vacancies within five months of town meeting, we don't meet during the World Series.
So, yeah, I mean, we're seeing half the problem here tonight, you know? You know, out of your 10 people, there's only, you know, there's only four here. I mean, that's, that speaks to, you know, the whole problem, I think, you know, that, you know, we just, people, people are busy and people can't get you.
I just, I think that although Facebook is great, I just, I, I personally do not have enough time to start another.
No, but there's pages out there, I was just saying, there's page, you know, the residents' page, you know, there's other, you know, things that you can do that, too.
I hear what you're saying, I-
I imagine that should all be funneled through the, through the town website, too.
Yeah.
That's where we've developed this fantastic website.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I think it would be helpful if we, if we could make sure that the information, the updated information that we had, that we were routinely putting it on the website, and we do, it's just that there's, you know, there's a lot of stuff there. And I'm sure there are easier ways for us to alert folks to when there is new content there. But once we've done that, I think that, that would, you know, there'd be the ability for those that are following could to, you know-
I think we need to hire a lot more.
You know, link, you know, tweet it, or link it, post it.
Can, so that report, can we hear back in March, April, do you think?
Yeah, it's actually, it would be nice if we set a date out in advance, because one of the things is, we didn't really get a chance to agenda this, and really work long and hard on our report, which is why you got the short of the floor. Is there anything that we want to do to have you back before this town meeting? Or are we required back? Before the final decision on the town meeting. So then we're talking March.
When do we have to set the order of the warrant articles?
The warrant will close on March 21st, and so it's the, it's the next week.
The next week? So why don't we do it in conjunction? They, they come with their recommendation ordering and an update? You know, and if it's not done, it's not done. If there's still time, or we're, you know, we're still looking at this data, then, or these data, then we'll do it. So that would be the-
Not to report back, I just want to, like, as we did in that last special time meeting, the order of the articles, just have-
Well, no, they have to do, no, I was saying, they could do that and provide an update at the same time. And if you don't, you know, so set it for the, was it the 24th, then Keith?
Yeah, let me just check here.
Of March?
Yeah, March 24th, that's one of those. So we'll have you back on March 24th, or not, so if you're ready for-
Well, they'll come back with their, their some recommendations, and if they're ready with some sort of-
Yeah, we'll, and we'll stay in touch with them in the meantime, as we, you know, as we finalize the, well, I got to tell you, as the articles will come in, I'm going to put them in the order of, we're talking about budget, supermajority-
Yeah, yeah.
And other, and then we can fine-tune the final based on, based on-
Yeah, actually, that's kind of the way we were talking about proceeding, is we, they, that they would give us a standing recommendation rather than article by article. I think that's what they, yeah, so.
Well, the problem is that when we get to the deadline, things have to move so fast that a bunch of meetings gets a little difficult, so we have to develop a system that's fast on its feet for, you know, making a little tweaking type comment.
And that's not town government. It's not fast on its feet.
Government in general.
All right.
But we'll find a way.
Any last words? Thank you very much. I think it's been some positive changes.
Thank you.
It's great. Thanks for coming in.
All right. Good evening.
All right. Regulations and policies, this has been bumped a couple times and a little bit behind schedule, but we have nothing until 9:15 now, so we can, what do we have with this? Keith, you want to give us an update of where we stand as to our last meeting?
Yeah, in your, when the board last discussed this back on December 2nd, you had gone through proposed amendments to policy number one on administrative policies and procedures as a board. So what we got back to you was Jen's compilation of your comments on that policy, so now you have, so you now have a draft document which would purport to be changes that you would want to adopt if it's in, if it's in the press. That was one of the things. The other two, which we do not have any particular, we don't have exhaustive input on, because we're just starting the discussion, that you had also agreed at a prior meeting that we're just starting the discussion, that you had also agreed at a prior meeting that you wanted to talk about policies seven and 14. Seven is the code of conduct and ethics, 14 is the policy on reputations and proclamation. So policies one, seven, and 14 were the three that you wanted to, to look at and.
Close attention. Um, start, Bill, where are we?
Oh, I'm toward the end of the packet on enumerated page 67.
Well, we have, that's done from three, um, yeah, just trying to figure out where we start over.
Because what, the first, the first.
But I have code of conduct, just like, I have code of conduct and ethics already started.
Right, because what we have here, the first, one, two, three, four, two-sided pages is, are the edits and the incorporations that Jen did to what we talked about.
Right, yep.
So this seems to take care of part two, policy section one, so this is done.
So if that one's in final form, then following the policy, you would vote to schedule it for a meeting when you adopt it, since you hear it twice, where.
What do we, the last one?
I guess what I'm saying is that, that you went through a process where you did edits, and now we're bringing it back to you, so maybe what you want to do is vote to accept, and I'm sorry that there's not a post motion on this, but vote to accept the policy number one, or receive them, rather, and then to vote to adopt them at your next meeting.
Okay.
Unless you want to adopt them tonight, which doesn't quite follow your policy.
Well, it does, because we always.
Because we already talked about.
Discuss the motions.
Yeah. Go for it. So I'm seeing code of conduct and ethics, but.
So we haven't talked about that yet.
But I'm seeing it marked up and edited, that's Jen's version, highlights?
Correct, and that's how we worked off last time.
All right, so that's all we have for this, in this packet?
And I had one, one thing I wanted to add to that too, so, I don't know.
All right, do we?
Okay, so can we just go ahead with this part, the first part?
And vote it?
Yeah, so moves that the board is, you know, can we?
I don't care.
Can we? All right, so.
Vote to accept it.
I should do this slowly, because you're going to write it down as I say it?
Are we accepting it, or are we voting to?
We accepted it and modified it in the last meeting, so.
So we're voting to adopt?
Adopt the amendments as introduced on December 2nd.
There you go.
And the motion will so read.
All right, so move that the board of selectmen adopt the administrative policies and procedures of the board as discussed on December 2nd, and here incorporated said amendments and edits.
Second, all those in favor of adopting the amended policies and procedures, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Look at that, we got something done.
Unanimous.
Okay, so now we talk ethics.
Ethics.
Not driveway installations.
Did that cover earth? Did it?
Okay, so this means that then the next many pages do not apply to our discussion tonight.
Until you hit 67.
Right.
Well, and you have, whose, whose are these here? Are these, Jim, these are yours? Because on the back side, it says that please bring copies in case.
Right.
Does this, does that look like your stuff though? That you wanted to?
No, I just had one.
You just had one?
Number four.
All right, so are these, is this yours?
Yes. Um, no, yeah, that was mine.
That's.
That's the organization of the board, we just said.
That's old, okay.
That's right.
All right, so we should just.
Go through it now, bring it up when it's here.
Okay, so that's old too. And these pages are also, all right, so we just hop to page 67, right? Is that where we're at?
Yep, that's it.
Terrific, here we go.
You have the floor.
Me?
Yes, you were in charge, you were, you were moving along there, yeah.
I'm ripping through, okay, so I think that our, our ethics and code of conduct should say that we should all be kind and generous to one another and to the public, and that should cover it.
Can we adopt the song as our official song too, Kind and Generous?
I don't know that song.
Oh, I'm not singing it.
But, um, I'm not so much against that. I, you know, it's been, it's been said many times that this is just, a lot of it, I believe, is a restatement of things that are in there. There's a lot of things that you basically just said that are, yeah, touchy feely, rah rah rah, let's, let's be nice, and then there's no, there's nothing to say, oh, well, if somebody is found in violation, or somebody doesn't follow this, there's nothing.
There's no teeth, there's.
There's nothing there.
Correct, there's no teeth.
And, you know, so, you know, I just think it's redundant and, and confusing, but.
Okay, well, at least.
Which part of it, are you talking about the whole thing in general? Yeah, 67 on this page through 71.
You just want to put it all in the shredder.
Or at least, and then maybe start again, I just think, yeah.
Okay, so, can I?
I mean, that's basically what you said, we should be kind and generous, was that tongue in cheek?
No, it was somewhat tongue in cheek. But with respect to the first paragraph here, I had a question, what is this agency? Keith, do you know what this is? Nothing in this section shall preclude any head of such agency from establishing and enforcing additional standards of conduct. This is MGL chapter 268A, section 23E. What agency are we talking about here?
You mean, what, how's the word agency defined in 268A, section 23?
No, how's it defined here?
This, this is a rendition of the state law. Well, it's citing, I mean, that's citing clause E of section 23 of Mass General Law, chapter 268A, so I'd have to go there to see what.
Oh, see what agency is the, is the head of that agency, okay.
It's the state that's defined, that's used the word agency, and somewhere around there is probably a definition of that.
Okay, I see that as being ambiguous, which is why I asked what agency. I mean, with respect to, you know, paragraph two, this is just, I think, better balanced structure, syntax.
Test.
Similar to what I put under section four with code of conduct, it just seems to me that there is a lot of extra words in there that I, I don't think need to be in there, which is why there's a lot of strikeouts.
And are you in the bullet signs?
Uh, yeah, in the bullets there, yep.
So I would add one more bullet to that.
Okay.
So this was back in December, I just didn't, didn't make this package.
Oh, okay, yep.
You know, so I would suggest that we add a new bullet in section four, code of conduct, to read any sitting selectman that has family member employed by any, any department within the town of Littleton, family member in parentheses, family member as defined in code of conflict of interest law as amended by chapter 194 acts of 2011E, immediate family. The employee and his spouse, and their parents, children, brothers, and sisters, close parentheses, shall recuse himself or herself from selectman deliberations and decisions and participate in the citizen deliberations.
So let's look at that for a second. Now let's use an example that we have right now. We're discussing a $6 million fire station. By virtue of that word, then I wouldn't have to remain silent about the fire station.
No, you would not.
No, not, no?
No, you would not.
Let's have it.
That's a false statement, that's why I'm saying, no, you wouldn't, you would absolutely have a voice.
I should have a voice as a selectman in a $6 million property.
That's, okay, that's your, that's your opinion, okay?
No, well, that's what I was elected to do. But in, without entering into a heated discussion about that, I think this is, this is, this is the crux of the issue, and this is why what we want to have is a strong level of awareness, a strong level of transparency, and, and ethical standards that are driven by practices of the person involved. Because in this case, clearly, I belong in the discussion about fire station, because it affects every single voter in this town, just like when we talk about private roads, people who lived on private roads, they're on this board, could talk about it, because it affected every single member of this town. So what I'm suggesting is the wording, I agree with what you're trying to accomplish, but the wording you're using is, I will use the word overkill, that what we want, and I'm perfectly willing to do, is have a high level of transparency, the highest level of transparency, the highest level of disclosure, where this board understands, and the public understands exactly what the situation is, and 100% compliance with the state ethics law with relation to how it defines all of that. And in that way, you can draw the balance of what is your responsibility as an elected town official to work on something versus what is, what is due diligence to make sure that you are not acting in a manner that can favor somebody? I'm sitting on a board with five people, if I favor somebody, I can count on somebody making mention of it. And so, as much as I'm for the strongest of ethics code, we cannot take it to the level where we're diminishing the capacity of government, and when we don't have to.
So what I'm hearing is that you guys are somewhat in agreement, you just think it goes too far.
I thought alternative wording in, in mind to what, if you read back further in what I suggested. So what I'm saying is, absolutely, if, if one of us has a family member, or as defined by state law and all that stuff, then first and foremost, we must address it according to state law, swiftly, surely, comprehensively. And that's where the suggestion that Joe put in comes into play. When we do that, and it requires an opinion of town council, it must be on cue, then, then we have an obligation to submit, this is, this is what I ask town council, this is the opinion, and this is what I will abide by. That gives you the standard by which you can hold somebody accountable if, if they deviate from that standard. I don't think a broad brush of approach to it is the proper approach if we're going to balance doing our job as selectmen, what we're elected to do, and, and just overdoing it on, on, you know, ethic stuff. So I guess what I'm saying is, we need to make a statement about that, but to blindly say that, well, if you have a selectman who has a member on a department, then you must recuse from any matter to do with that department, well, that's a lot of matters.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's read this again, where it says shall recuse him or herself from the selectman deliberations and decisions, and participate in the citizen's deliberation. So you still have the, the, the right to deliberate on any subject, it's just that you're recusing yourself from making a decision that may appear to be a conflict.
But the state.
The appearance of a conflict is a conflict.
No, it is not, the state law is very clear.
The appearance of a conflict is a conflict.
It is a conflict if you fail to comply with what the law says.
The, and I don't have the exact section here, unfortunately, because I forgot that, but the appearance.
And it's correct, and when you read it, you have the answer.
Of a conflict.
But the point is, if it's a conflict, it's a conflict, okay? If it is a true conflict in the eyes of the law, then that selectman has no business participating in it. If it's a conflict that is resolved in the eyes of the law, then the selectman does.
Thank you. So five dot four, and this actually came from you, Alex, appearance of conflict of interest, Mass General Law, 268A, section 23, page 69, I believe you're referring to the, our policy. The conflict of interest law provides that public officials and employees must avoid conduct that creates a reasonable impression that any official can improperly influence or unduly enjoy their official favor, or that they will likely to act or fail to act because of kinship, rank, position, or undue influence by any party or person.
That's correct.
So what you're looking at is basically the reasonable impression?
That's right.
And then there's the resolution the state law offers for that. In some cases, you are forbidden from discussing the matter, in other cases, you must disclose and go through a whole bunch of steps.
But again, an appearance of a conflict of interest is a conflict.
But you're reading only part of it. It says.
I just read what you quoted.
It also goes on to say that an appearance of conflict shall not exist if you've done the following things. So it tells you where the line is, the law is very clear, it tells you where the line is, and tells you you must disclose, and tells you, you must list the facts of the matter. And then it says, in certain circumstances, under certain things you disclose, you don't disclose at all, you just have to stay out of it, and others, once you've disclosed and filed for the record with, in the case of an elected official, it's the town clerk, in case our particular rule or regulation, it also has to be filed with this board to go onto the record. Then the law is clear, you have resolved it at that point, and you may participate.
Again, I, I, I just feel that this is a, a nice clean way to, to take that appearance. Can I see it one more time? Can I see it, you have right now? I just, anybody else have anything? I mean, I'd always, I see what, any department.
That is partial wording within law.
From selectman deliberation decision participating. I would just.
So what I'm proposing is, is a, a hyper sense of awareness, transparency, and disclosure. And in the public environment, with all these people sitting in the room, on the camera, that makes it so that there's nobody that can sit there and say, oh, he didn't tell us, you know, he didn't tell us this. But I.
Do you have a, do you have an alternative wording, that maybe accomplishes something similar?
Yeah, I think I actually put it.
I think this needs some, I think it needs some fine tuning, because this, recuse him, him or himself from selectman deliberation decision participate as a citizen, in the citizen. I think we need to define that, I mean, you don't define what, deliberating what and decisions on what, that you mean anything.
Anything in that, that particular department, that's all.
So.
So, so there is no, there is no influence by a member of this board, whether it be positive or negative, as it states in the law, for that particular department.
So you're making.
And all other departments are fine.
You're making the assumption that if I start to sit here and talk about something and it looks like an influence that the rest of you are going to just say, okay? No, that's not.
Why put us in that position to begin with? Why put us in that position to begin with?
I put us, I don't put us in the position, I put us in a position of very carefully deliberating on issues that I am, that are permissible by law, and staying away from things that are not permissible by law.
It is.
Because I, my job is a selectman, and my job is, you know, like I said, I'll go back to the fire, it's $6 million, you know, you're going to take one-fifth of the deliberation away from that, because you think that somewhere in that budget, I might be.
Decision making, not the deliberation, you can, you can participate in the deliberation.
Well, you had deliberation in your bullet point, though.
What's that?
Do you have the word deliberation in your bullet point?
No, and, and participating citizen deliberation.
As a citizen.
Citizen deliberation.
Sorry. Is, is part of the rub here that if, by way of example, Alex believes that there might be a conflict, Alex has the ability then to contact state ethics, have a private conversation with the state ethics board, be assured by the state ethics board, there is no conflict, and then he comes back to this board and says, I'm clear, there's no conflict, and that the rub is where folks at this table say, wow, how do we know, how do we know he explained it correctly, or how do we know that he briefed them in a way that, I mean, is that where the rub is? That there's a disbelief that you're disclosing thoroughly enough to then be precluded from participation, and that his representation to this board is an untruthful one?
Well, I think that untruthful is good, is a good word, because, you know, I think that we need to either, either take this code of conduct and, and be held to a higher standard, or just do away with the code of conduct and go with state conflict of interest law. So, so what we're doing here is, it's a double standard for us, okay? Which is okay, I have no issue with that, but, you know, we want to tighten it up so that the, there is no type of impression that there's any types of, and there's one good way to do that, is to recuse yourself.
Well, and it sounds like you believe this to be some sort of a. Well, and it sounds like you believe this to be some sort of a fix to the perhaps presumption that in, by way of example, Alex's disclosure to the state ethics board is not thorough enough.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
So, well, the thing is, the state ethics board, when you ask them about something, they send you something back and say, you told us this, you told us this, you told us this. So I mean, anytime somebody gets something, you know, anytime anybody on this board gets one, and the board's interested, they can, they should be able to view the letter. So that may, that may go away.
That's one of the things I've written down, because this has happened to me in the past, where I've called and I've got the attorney on duty, is that what the-
Yeah, yeah, attorney of the day or something, yeah.
Attorney of the day, and I get it, and I only, I only come in and say, I was approved, without backing up who said it, who didn't say it, because I've been joking with Alex, there was a certain topic, can't remember what it was. Later on, I was discussing something close to it, and I had a different interpretation by the attorney that was on duty, but I couldn't come back to this board and say-
There were better hours that you could call. Call after 3:30.
But the point that-
But that goes back to Jenna's point. It's all about how you present.
But I guess to incorporate one of the things I have here, no matter who does it in the future, no matter how you change it, whatever you do, I think that you have to be able to write down who you talked to, the date, and the whole-
I agree.
Well, we should submit the letters. You should submit the letter. I didn't get your letter. Oh, you can request a written decision.
They're not as good about, what we're going to be forced to do, because, you know, obviously I've spent a lot of time talking to these people to make sure they stay on the straight and narrow, what we're going to be forced to do is make more use of town council. And towards that end, in this entire issue, understanding this debate was coming up, I have submitted for town council to issue an opinion, write through every single item that will be discussed in the fire department, but each item individually-
So where is that letter that you discussed on April 8th, that you said town council did for you, in regards to you having a full-time firefighter working for you? You said you have those letters. Where is that letter?
I'm not sure I know which issue we-
On April 8th, I asked you, and you've said it in the past, about, I feel, again, a perception of a conflict of interest, or the impression of a conflict of interest. You have a full-time Littleton firefighter working for you. So I had asked in the past, I believe that's a conflict of interest, you should recuse yourself. Your response has been, I have a letter from town council saying that it is not a conflict, and it's on file with this board.
What I do know is I have-
I have yet to see that. Just tell us where the letter is. I sent you an email back in June, June 7th, asking for a copy of it.
I will sign, if you want to listen for a minute.
Sure, I will. I'll be more than happy to.
You brought up a point-
Yep.
Where there was a letter that was generated many years ago by, over whether my company could provide training to the town, or allow use of my fire training equipment for the town. The answer was no, I could not. At that time, the mention of that particular person was in that disclosure. After you brought it up, I called the Ethics Commission back, and I, and we went back through all the records, and her advice was, well, it's not specific enough. You need to file disclosure related to that person particularly here and now, because it's been a number of years. And that's what I did. Disclosure is filed.
So where is the letter, where is the letter that you referenced?
Now, let me finish.
All right.
So I asked for that in writing. The name's woman was me, who apparently Tom knows a family member of from the Ethics Commission, and it was four months later before I got it in writing. And I now have possession of that, but I've only had it for a little while. But, so, the point is, you brought it up, and I said, okay, I think I got it covered. And I didn't have it 100% covered. So I filed the disclosure to come in compliance, and that's what we want. That's-
I'm not saying, I'm talking about the specific letter you said town council drew for you in regards to having a full-time firefighter. You had mentioned it in the past, I'm just asking where that letter is, Alex. That's, it's not from the Ethics Commission's. It's not the Ethics Commission's. You did not address the issue. It's a letter that you referred to-
On that issue, I sought advice from the Ethics Commission. That's where I got the advice. The original letter was, town council was involved, because we were trying to find a way to tell whether we could donate, whether I could donate training to the town a little bit. And that's what town council was involved in.
Years ago.
My question-
Not in this last year, but years ago.
Years, when my company first formed, and somebody said, can you come to Littleton and do that? That turned out to be a much taller project than today we really-
I'm hearing a question asked, and I'm not hearing that specific question answered.
I'm just trying to get that answer.
It's 9:15 now. We have a, we're scheduled for executive session.
But again, again, if you refer back to that bullet, and you don't, if a member, you know, that appearance of a conflict, whether it be an employee that works for a board member that happens to work for the town also, or a family member, there is no appearance of any types of conflict. So in that sense, all these issues, if it's Jim Carr, John Ochs, or anybody, we recuse ourselves, and there's no appearance of any type of conflict.
But your bullet point doesn't include town employees who work for-
Maybe we should do that, too. That's a good point.
Covered.
Why don't we do this, Jim? Why don't you refine your statement, where I was going to do this again. Why don't you come up with some other opposing language that you feel is fit?
Maybe the two of you should go have breakfast together.
No.
I still won't get my answer. Won't get my question answered.
I have been working with town council-
It's obvious he lied about the-
For quite a while, in comprehensively looking at this. And he's near ready to issue a letter, which this board will get, that goes into this in great depth.
Okay. But again, getting back to the bullet points, you'll redraft a bullet point. Will revisit this, will you draft an opposing, or?
Not opposing.
Not opposing, but alternative language bullet point?
I think I more or less put that in there, where we adopt some sort of statement of saying that we're going to be open and transparent. Well-
Let me try this again. Let's have, let's have two bullet points in front of us like this that are allegedly trying to accomplish the same thing, so we can try to look at language.
I agree.
And then we'll look at some of these on this.
Well, I don't know that we can accomplish what he wants to accomplish, because he wants one thing.
That's not a great attitude. Let's keep the attitude that, yes, we can.
I'm more into, let's look at the town as a big picture. I don't want to pick off Jim Carr, I don't want to pick off you. I want a policy that's good for everybody that works for this town. And then I want to set the example, okay? Now, if you're going to do this, then you'd better go do a nice, long look at every other position in the town to make sure that all of those examples are followed.
We're talking about the Board of Selectmen, you know?
You know, I think-
But that's exactly the problem.
Exactly.
Is that you want a standard, because you want one person to have that standard, and you don't want the whole town to have it.
We're talking about the Board of Selectmen's policies, though, Alex. We're not talking about anything else.
No, what you're really talking about is Alex McCurdy. That's what you're talking about.
No, well, we know that there is no letter that Tom or Keith has on file in regards to your employee who happens to be a full-time firefighter. We know that for fact.
So what is your accusation?
You lied.
What? Did I lie?
You lied.
Okay.
You lied.
We'll see how far that's going to get.
On April 8th, go to LCTV to 25.4, and you'll be able to see, when I ask that question, your response.
All right.
You'll be able to see exactly what you said, Alex, and that takes all the questions off the table. 25.4.
I just told you exactly what I said, and I defy you to find facts to the contrary. And-
Can we, can we just, can we just hold up for a second on this?
I wrote those pretty strong words, Mr. Carr.
Okay, can we just hold up for a second?
And if you want to toss out accusations of lying, let me go out and get my notebook.
Okay. Hold up.
Look at the tape.
Hold up just a second. Can we just take a second to look at, I know that we have something else that we need to do.
We've got town council waiting here. We've got town council, it's 9:15, we're, these-
But I will draft my bullet point.
Yeah, but what did you, what did you want to do?
Well, the point that I want to make is that, again, I think the rub is in this idea that, you know, 5.2 here, it's the responsibility of each official to determine for him or herself whether or not to make disclosures prior to acting on a particular matter. I think the trouble here is that what we're expecting people to do is understand the law and subsequently have self-analysis as to whether or not something is meaningful, you know, meaningful enough to go forward and call the state ethics commission. And I think there's some level of suspicion here as to whether all of us have the same internal ethical barometer, and that when disclosures don't happen, or when they happen, they happen in an incomplete way. I mean, ultimately, this policy, as I mentioned at the end, has no teeth, so there is no punishment clause to incline people to behave in conformance with the law. So I think perhaps we should back into, with the policy relative to the ethics law. I think that it's almost fruitless to sit here and continue to have a discussion if we're not going to actually have admonishment and punishment as an incorporated part of this. I mean, what's the point of having a whole bunch of rules if there's no punishment clause?
Well, this, I don't think, I think to get to that point, I think there should be something in there. There's always been the fact that the potential to have a vote and say, oh, do we find Selectmen X in violation of the policy? We could have done that. I don't know, if we were to take anything punitive, we'd have to ask town council. I really don't think we can take anything punitive on our own board, so we'd have to, we'd have to come up with-
It's nothing you can do, right? There's no punishment that the board members can let.
Violating your own policy? No, you're all elected, so, and you're not-
So you could say something like, what are some of the words that says they, you know?
I didn't mean to sound that way.
But you could find in violation or something like that, or-
Something in the letter for the file?
Well, you know, make a motion that we find that a particular Select, a select person was in violation of something.
And that's exactly what I proposed. Except I proposed it with everybody that falls under the policy, so that, so that, because the point about no teeth is an important point. You may not be able to enforce anything on another Selectman, but we can set the example to enforce on other people where we can have a hearing.
But that's a, that's a do as I say, not do as I do.
And that's what we have to ask for.
I'm happy to do, no, because I'm happy to do all of it in absolute strict conformance with the law. I'm happy to do it. The question is, how do we reassure him that we can do it, and how do we make sure I can participate in matters that I should participate in?
There's five members here. You really need to convince.
Let's get, let's try to get the dueling policies in next week. Bullet points. And then Keith, you want to put us on for next week earlier?
Or two weeks from-
Next time?
Yeah, you know what? How come we don't meet weekly? I'm not kidding about this. At one point, the Board of Selectmen met weekly. The fact that we had-
When was that?
Well, someone told me that we used to meet weekly.
Okay. So what you meant to say, someone told me we used to meet weekly.
Right before I rejoined the board, they had a policy where they met once a month during the summertime, and I was going, but in the Town Government Study Committee, we were the only board that had the least amount of meetings during the whole year back then. So I can't remember when it was.
What about in the eighties when you were on, or the seventies when you were on?
It was the eighties. It was every other week.
Every week.
It was the same as it is right now.
I mean, on average, you meet at least twice a month, and sometimes two, or rather three or four. I mean, this month, you've met three times. You will have met, well, if you counted the planning board, four times.
Well, if you count voter participation, five times. But the point is, it seems, it seems as though we are, last week's meeting with the three departments was really great, because we were able to focus and concentrate during that time. But you're not, you're not interested in another Monday night meeting?
Control, you know, maybe it's too much on the agenda.
The agenda's getting kind of-
Hey, well, you could do-
What are you trying to say?
Well, I think in any event-
There's too much on the agenda.
Well, I think in any event-
What can be cut from here?
Nothing. You have another meeting.
Yeah, there's no, there's no need to have more regular meetings per month. You may want to schedule more special meetings on particular topics.
Let's look at it.
One of the things you talked about on how you wanted, how you wanted to handle your policy discussion, and we weren't able to pull it off with the schedule, was to have just the policy discussion on, start at 7 o'clock and don't do anything else. Well, I mean, if you, if you wanted to have special meetings that were, that were on particular topics, that might be a way to get you through some of the things that end up being, you know?
The problem with that is the general public attends if they have, if it's a special meeting, then we obviously put in a meeting with so many people here.
Well, I think the special meetings should be limited, you know, I mean, limited to the ones that we, you know, when we get some business done, knockoff, like the-
But this, this has been just fragmented into little teeny tiny snippets at, what, four meetings at this point?
What's up with the 20, Keith?
We've got the first part done.
Okay.
We've got the first policy done.
How about, how about February 13th? We need to do this.
Let's do this first. Let's put this on at 7:30. I've been tempted to do that so that we get it done, but then I had, you know, the study committee joint meeting, you know, they're going to get bumped down and do that, you know? You know, I want to try and service-
On the 27th, you've got a joint meeting at 7:15 with the Housing Authority to fill the vacancy.
Right.
So if you wanted to take up this matter at 7:30 that night, I think you, we don't have any other, we don't, we don't have anything else scheduled at seven, say, between 7:30 and 8:00.
How about an earliest start?
I'm fine with that.
I don't like an earliest start. Again, it's public participation, and that's why I think, you know, this is forced on the agenda where it has to go, because really, the important people are the people that are coming in this board trying to get things done, you know, and-
Well, you know, maybe we could-
You know, when we have a resident sit out there that wants to, you know, a resident or somebody doing business with the board, and they go through a protracted conversation like this, you know, I just don't feel really good about that. Let's get them in here and let them do their business.
Well, that's, that's been the-
Or we could have another meeting on February 13th.
Yeah, I don't know-
Yes, and we, home you can buy your wife a lovely gift.
I'm not up for, I'm not up for, not me this month, but we're going to February with the-
I'm helping you all out here.
You know, the 10th and the 24th, the 17th is-
Oh, I'm sorry, 17th. You'd better buy early.
Is President's Day holiday.
Oh, President's.
Yeah, that's, you know.
That's not going to work.
7th, 14th, yeah.
The 18th. Tuesday, the 18th.
So long as nothing else gets on any agenda, so we don't, you know, it's one thing.
If we could just be on the 18th, where we, where we do the ethics, we do the-
That's it. Do these two issues?
Yeah.
Has that, another meeting?
What day?
Good times, the 18th of February, Tuesday. I'll bring cookies.
There's nothing on here right now. It sounds familiar.
Yoga is on here. We could meet at the yoga studio.
I took mine there today. I was going to win.
What's the date again?
Tuesday, the 18th.
February 18th, the Tuesday. This is the day after Washington's, or after President's Day. Is that President's Day?
Oh, yes, it's Washington, I'm not even-
Yeah, it doesn't mind, too. That must be his actual birthday. Because Lincoln's on 12.
Spring training?
Lincoln is on the 12.
Spring training?
Yeah. Where's Reagan?
It's February school vacation.
No, he was born in February, wasn't he? So, Mr. Simone, I'm sorry, we don't, we're discussing Selectman policy, so it's traditional that I don't, you know, I let the Selectmen discuss, you know, it's like, not really, it's not a public hearing, so it's kind of like our discussion, the five people are discussing their policy, so that's kind of, that's why I've held off on calling on you. So if you have something other than the Selectman policy, that, you know, you know, something to discuss other than, you know, our business that is governed us. something to discuss other than, you know, our business that is governed us.
Let's talk about that for a second. First, Simone, Charles Rich. So we have a public meeting.
It's a, it's a meeting conducted in the public. Right. Yep.
It's a public meeting. And-
Different from a public hearing, though, right?
Policies. And we're talking about the code of ethics for our selectmen. And we're talking about the values and principles by which you make decisions, which guide the people's business. And we just had a discussion about increasing voter participation and getting people to meetings like this. I sat patiently with my hand up. It's an important conversation, but you've drawn some kind of arbitrary line as to when you accept voter participation, when you don't.
Well, this is a selectman policy. This is, we're discussing selectman business. So, you know, this is our business. This is our policy, you know?
I'd like to talk about the issue, but I don't want to break the rules. And if it's going to come up on the agenda again, I can certainly wait. And I appreciate that committees working on it's late. I have some questions and ask some comments.
Okay. Well, it is 9:30 now and we have town council here waiting for 15 minutes. So unless there's severe objection, I'm going to move on to executive session.
Are you going to bypass the rule?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, yeah.
I mean, that's just a note. I hope so. Yeah. Do you want to put that on the table?